Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 25th, 2023 Farmington School Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you'd please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, public participation? Do we have any proceedings? Okay, then just come up to the mic.
Yep.
Yep, and just.
It connects to people at home.
Okay. Yeah. I've watched past one. Just making sure. Yep. Just let everybody know your name.
Right. Uh, my name is Shaylen Folger. I'm a senior at the high school and I just have a few concerns of people in the high school, especially, uh, fellow seniors in my class. So, our biggest issue is the whole guidance issue. We don't know what's going on with our guidance counselors. The beginning of the year, obviously, as we know, was pretty messy with all the scheduling. It was thrown on Ms. Frankowitz, uh, the ELO coordinator who couldn't, he, she can't really be doing her own job. She's basically been doing the job of two guidance counselors along with her job on top of all of that and it's not fair to Ms. Frankowitz. Um, also, the state law says every school, every K through eight school and nine through 12 schools says that the schools have to have at least one running, uh, guidance counselor and usually two for larger schools, but we're not that large. We don't have any guidance counselors, which is the main concern for the senior class, especially because college. The senior class is very, very, very behind on everything they need to be doing for college. College essays, a lot of the seniors are behind on knowing how to apply for college and our basic, basically, the way we know how to apply for college is the guidance counselors. They guide us through the entire process of applying to college and we have no one to help us do that. No one to talk to about college, applying to scholarships, your FAFSA, anything like that. And it's stressing all those seniors out. And our class president, Callie, she's been having to basically take the role of the guidance counselor as much as she can because no one else can really guide our class as to what to do when we're applying for college. So that's our main concern right now.
Thank you. Um, we have hired, uh, guidance for the high school.
Okay.
Um, we obviously have to wait for their fingerprinting and background checks to come back until, you know, they can't be in the building without that information.
Right.
Completed. Um, so they are in process.
Okay.
Um, we just, that's at the discretion of the state.
Okay.
The, um, so we have hired them. I.
Just, do we have a, is that what we're waiting on at this point?
Yes.
And do we have any kind of timeline?
Yep, guidance counselor Monica starts Monday.
Okay.
And I've met with Jason to prepare a, uh, entrance to college 101 forum for the senior class. I'll be, I'll be presenting that.
Okay.
Awesome.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Right. I think in the past, we've had, um, like, uh, I don't know if it was through, like, UNH or something. We had somebody come in and do kind of like a workshop for scholarships and, um, applying, getting waivers for application fees. I don't know. I'll have to dig back and see who that was. Um, but I know that that was helpful in years past. It could have, it was either right before or right after COVID, the last time we had that. So I don't know if that's something that is no longer offered by, uh, if it was UNH. I'm not sure, but we can definitely look into that, too.
Okay. I have a few more smaller things that are a little smaller than like the whole guidance issue that I've.
Can I just ask a question before you?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah. Um, as, like, with your list that you've gathered, which we obviously appreciate and we want to keep the communication going.
Yep.
Have you followed the chain of command before coming here?
Yes, we've definitely made multiple attempts to.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
So, uh, we, the bathroom rule specifically during our, um, lunch period, we've tried to go through a bunch of people. We're not allowed to go to the bathroom at all during our lunch period and that's our only really free time to go to the bathroom. And some of our teachers, we told them, we can't go to the bathroom during our lunch period. That's when they tell us to go. A bunch of students told me, they're like, oh, can you please mention that at the school board meeting? They're very upset that they can't go to the bathroom when usually we're told, oh, lunch period is bathroom time, go to the bathroom during lunch, and now we can't go.
Yep.
What has the assistant principal and principal said about that when you approached them?
Uh, we approached our teachers and they said they would get to the assistant principal about it and they said they would talk to Abbott about it, but it's been, I think, since the second day of school and we have not gotten anything at all.
Might I suggest that you do that very thing that you're doing with us right now, which I think is commendable. We've really never had a senior come to us and say, hey, we're concerned about. I think that's great.
Thank you.
It takes initiative. And, but at the same time, I'd like to see you try that with, um, the principal and the assistant principal as well. Maybe get a couple of your friends and say, can we get an appointment with you to talk about these things?
That's, yeah, I agree with you, but that's also difficult because Mr. Mosier also is dealing with all of the scheduling and it's really, really, really difficult to be able to even talk to him one-on-one right now. So it's either, oh, we can't, you don't have time to talk to him or, oh, we'll get back to you. It's always, we're waiting for something, but nothing ever really comes about or happens. So we just are waiting.
Can I give you a tip?
Sure.
Tomorrow morning, I would walk in, I would say to Ms. Jansen and Ms. Healy, um, I'd like to speak to either the principal or vice principal just for a moment. Can you wait? And when they come out, say, can we schedule a time? Not, not, don't leave it open-ended, like, hey, can you get back to me? Cause then they get easily distracted, right, with all the things that they have to do and actually set a time for an appointment.
Okay.
I think it would work.
Hmm. Great. There was a question from, I don't remember exactly who, I'm not gonna throw out names here, about the bus coordinator that apparently she was fired and not given a reason why and a bunch of people taking the bus were like, oh, why was she fired? She was just thrown out. You allowed to say anything about that?
She wasn't fired.
She wasn't fired, okay. I'm hearing from a bunch of people, oh, the bus coordinator was fired. She wasn't given a reason why. She was let go. She doesn't work here anymore.
That position, if you, and it, and because it's in our minutes and it's public, it's public knowledge, um, that that individual resigned from the district.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. I just wanted to ask that myself. Thank you. Um, and the last thing I have that's minor but not huge is the phone rule. I'm not gonna out anybody exactly, but I've seen not only students, but a few teachers who think that the phone rule is too strict for this year and it's not. It's, the baby, the, the behavior of kids is obviously like terrible. It's not really good at the high school and not much we can do about that. But the phone rule has, I think, I've observed, contributed to this. It makes kids want to skip class more. It makes them want to leave class more so they can sneak their phones out into the hallway, sneak it out into the bathroom, cause the rule is if, if it's out, it's taken immediately. And I, I think that's, I don't think that rule is a good rule for the, it's, I don't think that's a good rule.
Do you have a suggestion on what you think would work?
I think, I think that the, I don't know what they're called, but the little things that you can put your phone in, I feel like that's not enforced enough. And I feel like that would actually do something if that, and it should also be up to the teachers instead of a school-wide rule, cause I feel like it should depend on how, like, difficult the class is and how much you need to, like, if you're done with your work, you can just go on your phone. I think that those little pockets need to be actually used because it's like, oh, they have those in the rooms, but nobody actually puts their phone in there. So they have their phones in their bags and they take out their phone and they get in trouble for using it, but nobody actually uses the pockets that were given. So I think those actually need to be enforced and actually used, cause they're not being used.
Okay.
But I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other public participation? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. We have fingerprinting.
If, this is just a question for the board to consider. You don't have to take any action unless you feel otherwise. This comes from the bus transportation boss in the onboarding process. They have to pay a fee for fingerprinting. We've got one individual who was brought in to consult and now has to be an employee. And in the process of letting the state know, um, there was some license that lapsed that she now has to reapply for. So it's, she's experiencing a few extra bucks out of pocket that she hadn't planned on. So I don't know if the board wants to take a look at the cost of fingerprinting as a general rule or if you're happy with things are as, as they are. I'll ha, be happy to convey either message that you'd like.
Is, um, the, is it more expensive for a driver because they have to get that different? They have to go to the, I know that they had a couple of different clearances that, you know, that they had to get. Is it more expensive for them versus, say, a teacher or a parent?
Of that, I do not know. It's a hundred dollars. It's a hundred dollars.
And what is it? Uh, oh, it's 25 for a background check, right? Okay.
Yeah.
So the background check that teachers go through, they pay 48.25. So the bus drivers, they just changed this whole process and now they have to do, like you said, a special clearance and they have to pay the state now a hundred dollars. And then they pay 48.25 to the district. But we just recently found out that they can share those prints for an additional five dollars. So it's really like between a hundred, hundred and five dollars for the bus drivers. And I believe that when a there, when they have to re-up on their certification or their dr, driving, I think, like, some of our older bus drivers are now gonna have to go through that clearance. It's all, it's all new.
It's new.
Sorry.
No.
In talking to some of the bus drivers that have, that had been with us for decades and now coming back and, you know, joining us again, it, I am amazed at the amount of red tape and hoops and obstacles that folks have to jump through. And, um, I'm having a hard time processing why. You know, we are, I'm not saying we just let everybody come in and start driving a bus, but I mean, we are so strapped for drivers in this state. Everybody's doing sign-ons, everybody's doubling up runs. I mean, there's one school this afternoon that does three runs. They've got all their schools that are, you know, lapse timed with starting. I just, it's just, I'm just venting. I don't have an alternative solution, but I think it's really ridiculous with how much there is. I would make a motion that we would pay anything over and above the 48.25 for licensing and background checks. Oh, for background checks. Teachers pay their licensing fees.
Right, 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 right.
So for background checks, anything above the 48.25, I'll make a motion that we pay that for the dri, reimburse the drivers for that.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, aye.
Thank you.
And grants manager?
Grants manager. So, right now, the SAU has two distinct job descriptions. One for a grants manager and the other for tech support associate. That's not the, the MAP position. It's the former Jason position. Um, the individual that we hired for the tech position, um, has signed on and is happy to move forward and what have you. Um, but in the course of this process, she came to us with a finance degree. I don't remember if it's bachelor's or master's, but she has a degree in that. So I could see her performing some of, well, not some, performing the role of grants management. So grants management essentially involves not only supporting the application process, but then once a, a grant is granted, then supporting the documentation process as well. Now, to be fair, for the board as well as for the folks at home, we have had individuals in the past who have served both roles. I don't know how that was funded. I assume it was funded under just the one job description. Um, but I, I think with all due respect and the need for longevity, that if we ask this individual to take on the grants role, um, which I believe is stipended. I'm not sure. I'd have to look, but that this individual, um, received compensation for performing that function as well. So I would just, you know, put that before the board for your consideration.
Now, is, this person is the former or doing power school?
Yes, doing power school.
Okay. All right, that's, yes, I do remember that we had had that kind of a dual role in the past, but I don't, I don't remember how it was structured.
It might not have been, but I, my, my, my understanding is.
I don't think that that was the initial.
The person was asked to take some of that responsibility.
I don't think it was the initial intention at the time. I think it was somebody that just picked up the grants piece as needed.
Um, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest, I wasn't gonna mo, move it, but it might be worth, I, I'm not opposed to that with that background, but that's a pretty unique breed of fish, grants. So, um, it might be worth someone from the SAU office making a phone call to Diane Berry and see if she would be interested in coming in and maybe doing a little bit of training at a consulting type fee. No? You already tried that? Okay. Oh, Diane, if you're watching, come on.
That's crazy.
Um, just for the board's notice, we did ask and she said no.
You, wait, you asked.
Diane Berry?
Oh.
And we didn't start it with the phrase, Joel told me to tell you.
Did you have something, Mary?
I had a couple, yeah. First of all, I'd, I'd need to know what line item in the budget, because in the budget that we started on one July, there is no line item for grant manager, so we could put it into the budget for the next year. I don't see how we can pay a grant manager without a line to charge it to.
And that work was being done by superintendent or?
Yes. Yep.
Mary makes a good point and I'd ask the board to consider the following. With the departure of our recent, I'm gonna use the term IT director, even though that wasn't his role, that position still remains vacant. Um, and it's to the point where we've gone to an outside headhunting source to try to find qualified individuals. They do find us qualified individuals, but it does come with, I believe, a price tag that we can't support long-term. Um, they give us two options, a, a temp hire, uh, which would be at a, maybe an eighty-five to ninety-dollar an hour, um, rate. The other option is, um, attempt to hire, which would give us the opportunity to get to know the individual and their capabilities. And if we press the hire button, um, then there's a, a percentage of annual salary that becomes the headhunter's fee. And it's not the hourly rate, it's the, whatever the annual salary would be. So I was gonna bring this up later, but since we're on it now, I would like to suggest that unless you feel otherwise, um, we not hire for this position. We do have the individual that we just discussed that would handle the power school slash grants. We do have, um, an in-house individual who's basically serving as a, a troubleshooter. Through recent discussions that we had about this, Mainstay, who's our outsourcing, our outsourced company who's providing support, provided us with an additional boots-on-the-ground person. So we do have those three individuals from Mainstay, um, three days a week. So, with, with that said, um, I'm, I'm working on the idea of trying to get our tech department at a position where we can have more, what I would consider, local control um, around the idea, for example, of managing the school, the school building, um, websites and maybe their Facebook pages, um, empowering the administrative assistants with some greater level of power school, um, understanding. So, we could consider this, if you'd like to, a trial period to see whether or not it works. And in the meanwhile, be able to use that, the money that's already in the budget um, to fund some of what we're talking about here. I would just put that out for your consideration.
But if you don't have a line that designate, it ties into grants, even if you borrow money from an unfunded teacher's position or thing, that money needs to be transferred into a specific line that speaks to grants. We don't have that, as far as I know.
Well, that's what, I'm kind of, I'm looking through an old report, cause I thought we did and I thought we brought it down to a dollar at one point.
If that's the case, then you're golden.
Huh, yeah.
If that's the case, then you're golden.
Right, I'm just going through an old one. I haven't gotten there yet, but I'm also skimming and trying to listen to, so.
What if grants becomes one of those and other assignments as other duties assigned?
I would have to look at the specific contract to the person that you're asking to take on that responsibility. And, yeah, you can, you can do it that way.
Uh, it also might be, and again, to go through the minutes and the, um, it might have been one of the jobs that, descriptions that we moved into S R. And we had the handful that we moved over that will, that were unfilled positions. I don't know if that's the case, but it, it, it could be. I, I don't know.
Grants, as long as I've been around, grants have always been basically handled by the BA.
Right.
And when that position became vacant, the superintendent took that on. She was also very, the two of them basically worked the grant process together.
Right.
And I would, I would hesitate to say that both job descriptions have any financial, any dealings with finances of any site of which a grant would be, are incorporated into the job descriptions. If they're not, they should be, because the, the, those two people are the ones, at least in my mind, that have to manage money. So, well, what I don't think we could do is, let's say we have a science teacher that in a former life was a grant manager. I don't think we could slide grant payment, grant salary into a teaching position. If there's a line in bu, in budget and even if it's there with a dollar in it, then we're good for this year. Otherwise, I have great concerns about doing it. And I really don't wanna go contracted services because we've blown that line right out of the water.
Right.
I'm happy to investigate it further with Mac if you'd like.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe he can find a generic enough line item that would cover something like that. If you had something like, I'm just gonna throw it out there, like a financial assistant.
Well, we have, I, we have one that's a salary line for, uh, admin fiscal services.
Nobody's in that?
Hmm, well, this is old, yeah, well, this is old, but this is last year. Um.
That would be, I mean.
That's as close as I've come so far.
I mean, that, and that may fit.
Right.
But I, again, I only concern myself with having, when you get to an audit and you've got forty thousand dollars spent and the description doesn't cover the line item, then you're gonna be in trouble.
Agreed.
I think it's a great idea.
And maybe just as a final note to all of this, um, right now, the, the issue that we face with regards to technology is kind of an immediate need is, it's three items. One is getting control of the district Facebook page. It's not that it's out of control. I don't want the folks at home to think that, but if, if you know what, anything about Facebook, there's usually the individual that generates the initial page and that individual then has the power to grant permissions for others to have access. So at this point, I'm without that ability and it would be a, a means of communicating that I'd like to have. Um, the other issue is generating, um, an email address. I believe for safety and security, which makes sense, and I'm not looking to change that, once paperwork comes back from families at the start of the school year or when a student is new that comes onboard, um, once all of that paperwork has been processed, it then triggers the IT department to generate, um, an email address. So if, if we can move ourselves to a place where there's more local control at the building level, I would certainly want approval. This isn't me saying do this, um, but I'd, I'd like for that local control to then be able to allow the ability to generate, um, an email address so long as there's a standardized means of, um, an email address format so that there aren't changes as a child travels through the school district. And third is Google Classroom. In terms of local control, I'm trying to find out more about the process, but right now, um, the email address impacts the ability for students to access and interact in a, in a Google environment, especially with Google Classroom. Um, so I'm looking to find out more about how the actual classroom gets generated, um, because I'm hearing that there, there's some, some impact with all of this. But I think we're early enough in the game where we can head this off. I've already had a conversation with Mainstay about this, so I'll keep you posted.
I see one question?
Yeah.
At one point, we approved Amy Jones with a stipend.
Yeah.
To handle our website.
And she's doing that right now.
Right. So is this a different?
No, I think just.
SAU website versus Facebook, two different?
Well, they would do, each building, I think, wanted more control over their own website and.
Okay, so she's just on the SAU 61?
Well, she's doing every, all the pages right now, as far as I know. Um, so just as, you know, to give them a little bit more control.
Okay.
And this isn't to suggest that she's doing a bad job or anything like that.
No, not at all. Um, just another avenue of getting things done.
But I think it's safe to say right now, from a parent consumer point of view, the, the natural tendency to go to a building website for information is just not there.
No, I think, yeah, I think that ship sailed.
And even when we do, it's still very difficult to find the information. Right, we brought this up.
Yeah, we did.
At the beginning.
Yep.
Oh, absolutely. Yep. Any other new business? Any, I'm, oh.
Sorry, well, um.
You're in a delay tonight.
We got a, well, I wasn't sure first, I should remind them. We got a email from a viewer, tax payer last week about the pledge. Was that hooked into?
Uh, I did send it to and I did respond back to them.
Okay.
Yep. Um. Any other unfinished business?
I have some, if I may.
Yeah.
Cool. So, um, I'm trying to learn all things financial and then getting into the budget and, uh, Mary's been super helpful with getting me up to speed. So, um, I have some questions. So on Max's report that he sent to us last month, he said that we had to get the DOE 25 in by the 30th of this month and I was just wondering if there was an update on that, cause we're at the 25th. And I was just wondering if there was an update on that because we're at the 25th.
I can only go by what I shared previously, and that is, we did get the extension to September 30th. And Mac feels that we will reach that without any problem.
I did email him earlier. Or late last week, sorry, and then actually earlier today as well about something different. I haven't heard back from him. That wasn't one of my questions.
Okay.
But I know that, and I don't, did you, you haven't heard back or, okay. But you did send your list, right?
I sent two pages worth of things that roll like, when you do DOT 25, one of the most important things to remember about it is that you have to close the previous year.
Right.
That has not been done.
Exactly.
So this week, we need to close 23. In order to close 23, in Mac's same report, he mentioned when they did journal entries, it threw off the cash balance and that any and all
Report.
bank report, bank reconciliations and balance sheets needed to be redone too. That needs to be done before you close. So that's something else that's got to be done between now and noon time on Friday.
So that was my second question. Do we know where we're at with the closeout of?
That was what I had.
That's a question that you sent.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to get some more information for Wednesday's budget committee meeting.
Great. And that's my next question. So Wednesday's budget committee meeting, they're obviously going to ask questions.
Yep.
You know, we don't have reports. We're not sure. So I was just wondering if there's any guidance.
Kind of, yeah. Well, so I asked him, you know, about the reports, knowing that, you know, they might not be accurate. So it's, you know. And I asked if he could do, I know, you know, like his summary, that first page of the stuff that he sent us last month. And I had sent that to the budget committee, which they were, you know, seemed.
They didn't come back with anything?
Right. So I'm hoping that if we aren't, you know, if he doesn't have things closed and cleaned up by then, or accurate reports at that time, at least we can have a summary of sorts, kind of like a state of the union of where we're at. So that's what I asked him for. So hopefully we'll have that. And I let him know when everything was, so.
That it's this Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that's the budget committee. Do we know how much money is left in Esser 2? And is the due date Friday to use that?
It is, and it's roughly 700, it's like 690,000, I think, last I checked. That's another one that we need to get into the portal from last week.
Okay. Yeah, the TASTA and then the individual.
Yes.
I don't know, what are they called? Not phones, but.
Yeah, devices.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, so we're still hoping to use that for Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
The individual devices were not approved along with the TASTA and the SRO.
I thought we did a separate.
They came up afterwards.
We can make one.
The motion on what?
Well, during the discussion from Chief Orlando about the TASTA system, he said, we asked him pros and cons. One of the things that he said, and I think Jim backed it up as well, was that many of our staff are not comfortable having it on their personal phones. So I think it died there. I had a conversation the next day and asked, is there like a mini walkie-talkie, something that this could be installed on that is very user-friendly? And that came forward.
I have the quote for those.
Right, but it was not.
That's why I thought that we had done that, but I think it all came.
When he wrote the narrative, he included that in the narrative, but it had not been voted on.
Okay.
We stopped with TASTA.
Gotcha. I knew we talked about it, but.
But that would, what that. Yeah, because we asked if it could be downloaded to a district device. And that's when Chief Orlando said, well, you could do that, but that's only good inside the building. And then, you know, if you have somebody that's outside that's on recess or any of that. So that started the, that started the gears whirling. And I asked, actually asked the next day. And there really is a device out there that can not only support this, but it can be, pardon the excuse, my reasoning, it can be dumbed down to, all you have to do when you walk into your desk in the morning is turn it on. It's automatically going to connect to the right channels to all the systems, so that it.
It comes pre-installed.
Yep, it's just.
Auto-start.
It's sitting there as opposed to what's on here. And it stays in the building because nobody, nobody would need it outside of the building. I, I kind of asked for that to be incorporated.
Well, we have the money in Esser.
This is true.
So should we make the motion? I mean, it has to be used.
Right. I'm trying to share the.
And I do think that forcing teachers to use their personal devices is not.
Well, it's such a powerful program that it drains batteries and it, you know, would take over if you had something else going on. And that's where my train of thought went to. We really need to get a separate unit in there.
I think it was like 124.
Were we able to pull from that before Friday, like logistically, is what I mean?
Well, here's the case. Roughly, if my math is correct, and it's not always, I, according to my last entry into the portal, we have roughly 590,491 available. If this paperwork and documentation doesn't get into the portal, and I believe we need at least a preliminary approval, that money's going back to the state. So the SRO, the TASTA system, and these devices would still leave us 80,000 on the tail end of Esser 3, Esser 2. That's my math. That's where the 590.
Who's logistically going to do that, Mac?
I don't know.
I mean, we, we have people that have access to the portal if he can't. We can have, you know, we can call the state and have them walk through it.
The narrative is already written.
Right.
That's just going to be.
Yep, pretty much copy paste to.
Uploaded.
Yeah, uploaded to the. Someone else, you've got it in front of you, so.
I'll make a motion to purchase the district devices, individual devices, out of Esser for a total of 125,280 dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Yeah. Sorry, guys. I thought that too much email to about the same thing. And I knew we had talked about it and.
The only reason I know about it is it was like one of those two o'clock in the morning things.
Yes.
There's got to be something in between lugging a full-size laptop and being nowhere on campus. And just ask the question.
Is Mac attending the budget committee meeting?
I don't know. I know we had.
Have we rescheduled him? I know he was sick for our last meeting. Is he rescheduled to come to us?
I asked him if he, well, I asked him a bunch, you know, a bunch of questions. And I asked him if he wanted to come in or if we wanted to, we could remote him in or whatever. I think their meetings are on Wednesdays.
Right. Oh, their board?
Am I remembering that right?
They were, I believe. Is it on the offshoot chance?
I, yeah, I don't know that answer. Because I also think, I always forget, I always think that budget is the like.
The last third, maybe it's the third.
Do we see Mac tomorrow?
Not that I know of.
When's the next one? Could someone, would someone mind reaching out to him and just see if there's a possibility that he might be available Wednesday?
Right.
I think it would be nice.
I mean, he doesn't have to stay for the.
No, he doesn't. I think it's nice that he just gives information that he's given to us, to the budget committee. I think it's nice to see a face that's doing some of his work.
Yes.
You know?
Jim, it's at seven on Wednesday.
So it's the budget committee on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Blackman Chambers.
Anybody have any?
I just have a couple more things. So you said that you asked Mac for possibly a report. Maybe he'll be there Wednesday.
Right.
But he gave us a nice update last month.
Yep.
I'm hoping that he could do that again.
That's, yeah. And I said if he couldn't generate the reports, if he would be able to do something like he did before.
Yeah, I mean, he, I thought it was so helpful and answered a lot of our questions. So it'd be great if he could do that again. Mary, I do need to help with the next question. The unexpendited fund balance, do we know when we will know what that will be? And that I haven't wrapped my head around, so I need more training on that.
When we go to set the tax rate, let's say all the financing things were done. We know we have a solid unexpendited fund balance, one that's not a restricted unexpendited. Let's say it's 500,000 dollars. Before you set the tax rate, this board needs to say, and majority vote, we want to put 20,000 in this capital reserve. We want to, we want to do, you know, we have to allocate and vote on with a description of the how, when, and where. Because when you set the tax rate, when you fill out the forms to set that, those lines are there. So let's say you have 500,000 and the board decides to move 400,000 of it into capital reserves or whatever the projects may be. Then the 100 dollars remaining plays into the tax rate. It's a little more complicated than that, but if we don't have unexpendited fund balance, let's, okay, we need that. We also need to have board discussion about capital reserve funds, any other projects hanging out there, anything that's going to go on a Warren article, all of those things have to be done. We have to be able to think about it, at least for a few minutes, make a vote. And then the minutes of that will follow the tax rate setting documents. So tax rate setting is estimated to be the third week in October. So we have three weeks. Tax rate setting is going to also encompass, the process that you get to unexpendited fund balance will be closing out 23. Reconciling all the grants, not just Esser, all the grants, and having the motions from the board as to what we're looking to do with unexpendited. And we have two meetings between, not including tonight, we have two more meetings in order to set that in motion and be prepared. If tax rate setting does not go out, what happens is if it gets set in November as opposed to October, in November, then the bills are very likely, by the time they get printed, processed, and mailed out, then the tax bills are due in 2024, which does all kinds of bad things. People can't take it as a tax deduction. People can't, haven't budgeted for it. The town's finances, we could actually be forced into what's known as a, Steve, help me with this.
I'm just going to say.
Yeah, yeah.
It's basically taking a loan to pay.
It's a tax into anticipation.
Unfortunately, that happened seven or eight years ago.
Yeah, probably. And TANs, I mean, they're short-term, but if you borrow $4 million to keep things floating at 12%, which is an average TAN note, you can buy a lot of books and teachers with that. So at all costs, because of the steps that are leading up to tax rate, we have a lot of work.
Yep.
I don't know how else to explain it.
Because of all of that, do you guys think it's appropriate that we have financials slash budget on the agenda moving forward through budget season?
Okay, yeah.
Have one on?
Adding financials or budget, however you want to word it, so that it's on the agenda each time we meet through budget season? Okay. Thank you.
As far as tax rate setting, Jim goes, Ken Dickey would be an excellent resource for what they're going to, they lead, because the Board of Selectmen sets the tax rate, but they cannot do it without our numbers. So he would be a great one to achieve some type of a timeline from him to how it needs to be done. And he may even be able to walk you through some of the parts of that.
Did you have something for unfinished?
Yeah, just unfinished business. I just, I, a couple of individuals in the community reached out to me wanting to know about the fire sprinkler system and what that was going on with that or an update. Do we have an update? Has anyone been in? Do we know?
We can get something from Larry.
I'll get something from Larry. They were supposed to be in Friday of last week at Valley View for sprinklers and the fire system at the high school. Larry went and let the fire department know that the building had, was offline. The company that deals with that has been in to rectify that. It was a, it was a wiring issue. It's not Wi-Fi.
Thank you. Yeah.
New girls are taking ours tonight there.
So maybe a little asterisk on the budget conversation. About four weeks into my tenure, seeing how things were with the budget, I've asked that the budget be frozen. And Mac said it would be good to keep that in place for the remainder of the fiscal year. Now, what that means, especially for the folks at home, it doesn't mean that we're not making any expenditures. But what it does mean is, as needs arise and purchases need to be made, it's clearly and closely reviewed at the building level by the administration. And they let me know, and I'll meet with them on whatever the issue happens to be. Because we're not grinding education to a halt. We're not grinding supplies or anything like that to a halt. If anything, we're just taking a closer look at what actually needs to be spent.
Understood.
Should we call it a freeze?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, because that would, I mean, it's not an official freeze because that would have to come.
I just believe that that has to come from a board vote, so maybe we should call it a.
Watchful eye.
Yeah.
Microscopic oversight. How's that?
Cooling.
Yeah, a thaw.
Micromanaging.
Trying to think of a.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's good.
Put it in the fridge instead of the freezer.
Okay.
I don't know. Any other unfinished business from anybody?
Little red schoolhouse. It's just not, I mean, that whole thing just died.
Put that on the list to look into.
I believe there's some people in the background working on it, working on a proposal.
Because the last I knew, we had, we didn't do it right the first time.
We did it this time and we get nothing.
Okay.
And we even extended it 30 days.
Okay, I don't ever remember.
Nothing came in.
Okay. I know that we, we put it out there, but I never got a follow-up, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
I knew you had something, Mary. You wouldn't let me down.
Snowplow bid should go out. I know I'm not supposed to say the yes word, but I have to. Mine have already gone out.
Well, and if the farmer's almanac is correct, we'll be needing some plows. So we can.
You can, you should be able to use last year's as a guide.
Yeah. And I think when we put it out, if I remember last year, I think we only had. And I think when we put it out, if I remember last year, I think we only had one, like the same one that we've been using.
I'll also, um, let me add.
I can come in this week at some point and we can go through the old bids and put, bring a bid together.
It can be sent out to, um, a few places, you know, people that we know or whatever. But, um, I can also, here are bad news. Warn you that my salt prices that came in today are about twenty-two percent higher than last year. So we can expect.
Back to public participation. Anybody have any follow-up items under public? Our next meeting then is scheduled for October second. We have some manifests. And I will make a motion to go into non-public session one under R S A ninety-one, A three, two, A B C nominations and reservations. All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Good night.